All right, we'll go ahead and get started this evening. Welcome, everybody. First up, we have a motion to accept or modify the agenda this evening. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Moving on to the action agenda this evening. First up, we have the approval of edits made to school security officer job description. Is there anyone from the public that wants to speak on this item this evening? Mr. Lee.
So, last meeting, we approved the additional school resource officers positions that would start January 2nd. In talking with other counties, talking with Dr. Ballinger and our staff, our current job description requires a bachelor candidate similar to what our teacher candidates would require. So, the thought behind that is based on our need at the buildings, we would like to modify that job description and also accept years of experience of law enforcement corrections or security experience. So, the new job title or the new job description under the knowledge, skills, and education and ability section would read, if approved by the board, candidate must, one, be a graduate of an accredited college or university, or, two, possess a high school diploma with previous law enforcement corrections or security experience. Candidates must be at least 21 years of age and must be able to obtain a school's safety officer certification through the Department of Criminal Justice Services within 90 days.
Can I just clarify one thing for those listening at home? You just started, I think accidentally, by saying school resource officer, but this is Warren County Public Schools hiring a school security officer.
Yes, ma'am. School security officer. Yes, ma'am. Sorry about that. I would absolutely think so, yes. This was just based on other counties that have a school security officer positions, kind of what they've modified their job description. We could certainly add that as well.
And currently, this is on the teacher salary scale. So, you know, that's why it required a bachelor's. And that's why, you know, we're wanting to also say, you know, if you have this other experience, which means you probably have been certified as law enforcement somewhere, or maybe you're retired law enforcement, to give us that background. You're not always going to get that with the bachelor level sometimes. Sometimes you will. So, you know, that's why we wanted to bring that to the board tonight, to have that possible change and discussion at this time to make sure you're okay with that.
That individual would be employed by the school system.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Lee or Dr. Ballinger on this? Is there a motion?
I move that the Warren County School Board approve the revised job description for the school security officer positions.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Next up, we have approval for an additional ELL and Reston Jeffries Elementary Teacher. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on that this evening from the public?
It's all right. Okay. As our ELL population, English language learners, population continues to increase, there is a need for an additional teacher to help meet their needs. We have also experienced an increase in elementary numbers that have pushed class size limits at Reston Jeffries Elementary Schools. Three teachers were added to the budget, but larger numbers in lower grades required staff to be adjusted at Reston Jeffries Elementary School this year. The two positions will help address the increased number of students in our ELL program and at Reston Jeffries Elementary School.
So, just to clarify, these are two different positions. So, one is at Reston, the other one will probably be, I believe, maybe is kind of a middle school or one kind of, it's at a secondary school with the ELL. So, and we just, with the ELL, we have to make sure that we're meeting requirements by the Department of Justice for the minutes that are required for our students. And so, this will help us to, as our population increases, this will help us to be able to meet those minutes.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move that Warren County School Board approve the additional ELL and Reston Jeffries Elementary's teacher position for the 23, 24 school year.
Is there a second?
Oh, yes, Madam Chair, I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Next up, we have other work or activities. This is Dr. Ballinger. Is there anyone here from the public that wants to speak on this? We'll have you explain a little bit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I've been asked if I could, would be interested in doing some lecturing for local colleges and universities, and so that is something that I am interested in. And according to my contract, if I take on any speaking engagements, writing, lecturing, or other professional activities for compensation, as long as they, and as long as they do not interfere with my current job, you know, that must be approved by the board. And these opportunities would be after school hours, after work, and so they would not be, I would not do these activities during the school day with my job.
Any questions for Dr. Ballinger? Is there a motion on this?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that superintendent be allowed to lecture for compensation for higher education institutions as long as it does not interfere with the duties of the superintendent as defined in the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next up, we have the approval of environmental science textbook purchase. Is there anyone here that would like to speak about that?
Good evening. I would like to put before the board a recommendation for the school division to purchase new environmental science textbooks. This would include the class set, hardback book, and then online textbook access for all of our students that take environmental science. Environmental science is our ninth grade science course, and it is the course that the far majority of our ninth grade students take at high school. It is not an SOL-tested course. However, we have structured it where appropriate with the environmental science standards to kind of be that precursor course into biology, which is the 10th grade course where they do take an SOL. And so, we went through the textbook adoption process. It kind of went through two iterations, and we have received parent feedback, teacher input. We worked through our math and science curriculum coordinator in order to choose McGraw-Hill's Environmental Science book for a five-year contract in the amount of $20,052.86. And like I say, that would give us online access for five years. Environmental science used to be an elective, but about five or six years ago, when the state changed the testing to the biology course as a requirement, the course slid into kind of the ninth grade course. So, we have a mixture of materials based on the building. So, there's some inconsistencies with what textbook access and things like that looks like across the two high schools.
Any questions for Ms. Bragg? Is there a motion?
I move that the Warren County Public Schools adopt and purchase the McGraw-Hill Environmental Science textbook and online subscription for a five-year term.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, Ms. Bragg.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our work session this evening, we have Anti-Trafficking International presentation.
You can either way?
I'll stand. Good, good. Thank you. Hi, thank you all for having me here. My name is Erin Fisher. I'm the executive director for Anti-Trafficking International. I tell you just a little bit about our organization. So, we started off in 2013 under the name of Just Ask. It was a federally funded regional task force that brought educators, law enforcement, members of the community, healthcare workers, and so forth, all those who were seeing an uptick in human trafficking, especially in the northern Virginia region. At that time, what was decided was that we were going to focus on providing awareness education in schools that were being specifically targeted by gang controlled trafficking. We adopted a multivector approach with all of these experts in the field to contribute to the creation of the curriculum. And we had brought it out in the communities, and for now 10 years, our curriculum has been presented in schools, not only in Virginia, but also in other states in the country and in three countries around the world. Human trafficking is quickly growing to be overtaking the drug trafficking trade. The reason that that can happen so quickly is because the product can be used over and over and over again. I was at a training about two weeks ago for sexual trauma and exploitation, and one of the stories that was shared was a gang controlled trafficking situation where the one person had five girls that they were setting up with dates every day after school between the hours of 3:00 and 7:00. Those girls serviced eight different clients each, every day, five days a week after school. It isn't, the problem of human trafficking isn't now just regionally at the bigger city areas in the metropolitan DC area, it is all over the state. We know that rural, the rural communities have a high vulnerability rate because of the fentanyl and opioid epidemic. Familial trafficking has increased significantly since COVID, and especially in rural parts of the state. Sex trafficking can be found everywhere. You guys are not immune because you have 66 and 81 to major interstates, which carry people to and from everywhere. You are in Pennsylvania within two hours, you're in Maryland, you're in West Virginia, and back down southern Virginia. So, no one is immune to this problem, and especially with the fact that grooming can take place online. And just about every kid now, over the age of 12 at least, is going to have access to some sort of phone or internet access. We know that traffickers are way ahead of the game than most parents are, and most parents don't even know how to talk about this problem. And what we're finding is that the most successful programs that we have are where we've educated parents, but also the students in their classrooms. So, our program is sustainable, it's very cost-effective, the model is not meant to increase the instruction time. In fact, for the FLE standards of learning, I'll go through what we cover on that, but it is one, one hour and a half lesson in grade 6 through 10. Different themes are covered in each one of those grades, and it could be broken up into two 45-minute lessons. Teachers are given all the materials that they need. It's a written, pretty much a written script for them. They don't have to go on to research their own information for the classroom, and they have, we provide technical support through the whole process, teacher training. We also encourage a parent, a parent night where they can come in, not only view the curriculum, but also ask questions and hear the presentation. One of my colleagues, Susan Young, is a mother whose daughter was trafficked while she was in high school, from the time that she was 14 until the time she was 17. Susan comes and talks about her story and what it looked like for her as a mom, being completely oblivious to what was happening to her daughter. Now, this was years ago, where schools weren't really aware of the fact that the trafficking was going on in their schools. But now, we know it is. We have parents, I had a phone call with a parent two weeks, a week ago, whose daughter was being trafficked, and the police didn't know how to handle it. And they went to the school counselor, and they needed some resources and how to handle that. That was in a rural part of the state, and it's a real issue that parents are starting to deal with, and they don't even know of the education. So, one of the processes that we ask that parents are educated as well. This curriculum can be customized. So, we were talking about the ELL population. We can have it translated into Spanish. It is partially translated into Spanish right now, it's one of the projects we're completing. So, we can fit it to accommodate your school district in particular. And we can, generally, it's handled through your FLE department, but if it needs to, we can adapt it to other areas. We've seen that the knowledge, the increased knowledge of human trafficking awareness has significantly dropped the number of victims that are self-reporting. And in fact, sometimes what happens is that a child will be in a situation where they're receiving the curriculum, and they will self-identify. They find the words, the vocabulary that can help them recognize that what is happening isn't necessarily a good thing. I don't, many of you probably grew up in similar times that I did. We grew up with the DARE project. That was where the egg in the firepan is your brain, brain on drugs, right? That not only taught us about the dangers of drugs, but we started talking about it in high school and in middle school. I remember having conversations about it, whether it was, you know, in a joking manner or if it was in a serious manner, we talked about the problem. That's what needs to start happening. We need to get ahead of human trafficking before if somebody gets trapped into it. So, we give them the, we give them skills to look for, things to look for, to prevent exploitation, and just the whole idea is to have a cultural shift, just like the DARE program did in the 80s and 90s. This program is designed to be a cultural shift for people, for children to be aware of the dangers, not only outside, but online as well. Our curriculum was designed by professional curriculum developers, and that, based on actual case examples. For each grade level, it's a case that one of the detectives had had in, at that age level, so that it's a very relatable story. And what it incorporates is a lot of classroom discussion. It's not presented and then they go. It's a lot of interaction, question, and dialogue that goes on, and that's the most helpful part for the kids to really be able to talk and understand. One of the teachers that I work with pretty closely about, when we update materials, said that those discussions not only help them work through the scenario in their own mind, but they also help each other understand. So, females understanding what it is when men or male students say or do something, and the females can speak up and say, you know, that makes us uncomfortable. We don't appreciate that, and that's objectifying, or whatever terms that they are going to use. It helps them have that conversation in a safe place. Structure is a lesson, there's an introduction of the topic, key terms, a story, discussion, and further learning, and then a conclusion to the story. What I'm going to do is I'm going to leave with Heather with a number of copies of our grade 6 through 10 curriculum. There's a PowerPoint that goes along with these. It adds no extra information. It's more for the teachers to have a placeholder and to kind of keep things going, and just more of a distraction, more for the kids to stay awake. Topics that are discussed, so we have teen trafficking, abuse and neglect in grade 6. Grade 7 is teen trafficking, online, and online safety. Trafficking, exploitation, and healthy relationships are in grade 8. Grade 9 is sexual violence, exploitation, and sex trafficking. Grade 10, healthy relationships, exploitation, and sex trafficking. Now, in, throughout all of these, we talk about consent, we talk about choice, we talk about hope and respect, and the responsibility of being a part of the community. So, those are resonating themes. In specific, the, let's see, can we get the PDF? Thank you. I want to just demonstrate, show you a quick demonstration of what we do cover for the federal, sorry, the family life education SOLs. There's more that we cover than what's listed here because there's always consent listed in each lesson. So, on the left, you'll see the Virginia standards of learning, and on the right, that's what Just Ask will cover. So, and there are other, there are nuances within the Virginia standards of learning that just automatically naturally fall in. Again, consent is one of them. Abuse and inappropriate relationships is a common theme throughout all the grades, and the FLE SOLs generally touch on that just in each grade level. So, there's an understanding of human trafficking and abuse in grade 6, as well as their understanding of the definition, what it looks like for scouting, manipulation, and trapping, what the process is. You can go ahead and move it up a little bit. Again, to be, you have to demonstrate, under the Just Ask program, you have to demonstrate the effective methods of education and prevention and integration, so they'll have a foundation of knowledge. I won't, as, you can scroll through this to see what we have, but I will also make this accessible to Heather, so she can pass that along to you. We are constantly updating the curriculum. In fact, I'm in the middle of a new update to just make sure that with the new Virginia standards of learning, that from the last time we updated, based on there, I want to make sure that we are covering the new requirements and the definitions that need to be discussed in the classroom as well. I'll leave you with one quick story, and this is where really we became confident that this was necessary. This student in, in seventh, or I'm sorry, in, she was 17, she was a junior in high school, and she had been a very good student, very popular with friends, didn't really date very much, but she spent a lot of time at school, really academically achieving a lot of honors and so forth. She was able to get a car by, and get a job, and so she started working at a local store. And during this time, there was a boy who would come in from another store that was adjacent to her, and came in and started to be friends, make friendship with her, and they really kicked it off. He was in a, he was a early freshman sophomore year in junior college, and Maria was getting ready to prepare for college applications and graduation. Over the course of time, they started to date. Her parents weren't necessarily approving of her dating before she was 18, so she kept it secret. And over the course of six months, they maintained a relationship secret and apart from her parents. One day, he came in and said to her that he was going to be evicted from his apartment because he had forgotten to pay his rent twice in a row, and he couldn't afford it, and told her that if he had, if he was kicked out, he was going to have to move back to where his parents left, which was a couple states over. Maria was devastated, she wanted to help him, and, but she couldn't give him the money because her parents weren't watching the bank account. He asked if she would consider having sex with one of his friends that really, really liked her and had asked, was always head over heels for her, and it would just be one time. And she was appalled. She couldn't fathom doing that, but she also couldn't fathom losing her boyfriend. Maria went to school the next day, and, and God, the curriculum, the Just Ask curriculum was presented to her class, and she realized all of the grooming that had happened over this previous six months. She recognized the words that he was using were words to manipulate her and trap her. And she went to teacher right after the class had been presented. Teacher brought her down to the school counselor, and they brought her mom in. Mom discussed it with the counselor, and they called the police in. He was doing this to other children, other high school students in the area, and was arrested and prosecuted in Virginia for human trafficking. And it was because of the curriculum, it was because of the education that she received that she was able to identify and speak up and get the help that she needed, and not only did she help herself, but she saved the lives of those other girls. So, just to reiterate how important it is to have something in schools, I can tell you, as a parent myself, I wouldn't even know where to begin to have this conversation with my children because I have no, I have no knowledge of this happening in the United States, let alone in Virginia. And I can imagine many other parents don't even know how to open up this conversation with their kids. So, it is, I think, upon the schools, in their best interest, to start this conversation with them, to bring the parents in alongside of the children, so they're educated and protected, and it starts the new conversation to preventing human trafficking before it starts. Thank you for your time.
And so, Madam Chair, I just want to, so, myself with Ms. Bragg, this was presented to us, Ms. Fisher was there, but I also want to recognize two community members that actually brought this to us, and that's Mr. Novak and Mr. Williams. They met with me and was discussing this, and we set up a meeting, and then Ms. Fisher came in, and Heather has been looking through the supplemental materials. What we wanted to do was, you know, present this to you. This would be a supplemental to some family life that would cover those SOLs, and, you know, but I just wanted to recognize also the community members that brought this to us, to the school system. As, I know there was something in the community that, I guess, an activity or an event, and a film, and, you know, it sparked something, and so here we are today. So, I did want to recognize our community members as well. And then if you have any questions concerning this program, or questions for our community members.
With some of the scripted programs that I'm familiar with, there's a student workbook that goes along with it. Is there a student workbook in this program?
There isn't. It's based purely on activities that are assigned in class. Most of them are discussion-based. There are some manipulatives that the kids will use in class, but there is no workbook.
And this, there is a cost, so the cost is around $5,000?
$5,000.
And it's for three years?
It's for three years, all technical support, as many trainings as you need to have. It includes the parent night and materials for, we have parent and tool, teen kits, our parent and teen toolkits that provide the information for them to just kind of keep at home, and, you know, if something happens, they have resources to go to and so forth as well, so. Yeah, that's from all of our schools.
That would be for the 6th through 10th.
Right, but not, not for, we're not thinking your school.
No, it's just for the division, for three years. Yes, ma'am.
And every year, there would be a parent night.
Yeah, that's, if you had, if you had it twice a year, it would be there for you.
So, yeah, every year. Thank you, I appreciate you sharing that. Thank you to our community members.
Sure. So, the $5,000, while it's not a lot of money, if that is a struggle for you guys, the Warren County Rotary Club and the Front Row Rotary Club will fund that. We think it's that important, so if you don't need it, that's great, we'll channel our money to other good causes. But, I mean, as you can see, I mean, or maybe you can't see because you only have two minutes tonight, but this, this, this human trafficking is so broad, you know, and we've heard, you know, one or two examples, but it's everything from what was in The Sound of Freedom, you know, kids being kidnapped and, you know, forced into human, you know... know, kids being kidnapped and, you know, forced into human, you know, labor or sex trafficking. But, or, you know, kids being groomed online. I mean, we had a thing at our theater, which I want to recognize Amelia Stansell, who's, you know, working with the Rotary Action Group Against Slavery. We had Detective Mark Ramy here from the town and he said something pretty powerful at the end of the movie. We were having a discussion and he said, "I wish I had put a post online just before this." And he works in trying to catch these folks online, the predators. And he said that after two hours, he would expect that he would have thirty responses to his post about being a fourteen-year-old girl. So that's the kind of thing that our kids are encountering and we need to give them some ammunition and some knowledge to, you know, to fight that so that they'll be aware so they can prevent it before something bad happens to them.
The only thing I would add is don't let money be the issue because we'll, we'll take care of that.
Thank you, we appreciate you guys bringing this to us, a generous offer to help with the funding. Thank you so much. Next up this evening, we have the Secondary Truancy Prevention Officer contract from ten months to twelve months, and that's Mr. Smith.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity for Mr. Haynes. Chuck Haynes, our Secondary Truancy Prevention Officer, to speak a little bit in regards to the role of the truancy officer, how that's changed over the last few years in particular. And also, we have two truancy officers, our prevention officers, we have an elementary and a secondary. And that obviously truancy or chronic absenteeism and truancy and those type of things are things that we're trying to improve on as far as have less of that. A lot of that gets to the point of where it runs through our truancy prevention officers. And a lot of their work initially is done to try to deter some of the truancy issues to get students and families in general back on track of getting their students to school. And then sometimes it sort of goes beyond that. It involves, it starts to involve the court system and those type of processes. And that we are noticing, especially at the secondary level, that the need has grown as far as to work with these particular families and also to work with the court systems on, on either trying to change the behavior of not coming to school to come to school. Mr. Haynes over, and I'll say over the last several years, but it could even be prior to that, and he can speak on behalf of this, normally, he's a ten-month employee, that both of those positions are ten-month employee positions. But their assignments and so forth with the courts and some of those duties extend into the summertime. So we have been, in particular this past summer, working off time sheets and those type of things during the summer to get this, these areas covered. So tonight, we would like to discuss looking into the future of that position, particularly the secondary position from a ten-month to either eleven or twelve-month position so that we can fulfill the obligations that we have. And I'm going to turn it over this time to Mr. Haynes, our Secondary Truancy Prevention Officer, to discuss his role and what the summer work and those type of things look like. So, Mr. Haynes.
I'm Chuck Haynes. And truancy involves the school administration conducting attendance meetings with our students and their families. There are two types of students that I work with, students who are refusing to go to school and their parents do not approve or do not support their absences. And those make up very few of my cases. By and large, the folks that I'm working with, to a certain degree, parents have supported these students not being in school. Currently, we have sixty-six students at our two middle schools and two high schools who have missed a third or more of the school year. None of those students, most of those students are not currently on my caseload. Those are students that we will need to meet with going forward, develop attendance plans. And if we don't see progress, then those petitions may need to be filed with the court service unit. At that point, once a petition is filed, the court service unit can attempt what's called a diversion. It's basically a hundred and twenty-day probationary period. Well, they will create goals, the probation officer will sit down with the family, they will have a plan set up. If that student is successful, then that diversion ends successfully and the petition doesn't go any further. If it's not successful, then that petition is forwarded to the court. These petitions may be filed once, again, once we see that progress is not being made and attendance is not improving. And that happens in February, March, and April. Adjudication or trial of that petition has to take place within a hundred and twenty days, which means that ultimately they will end up in court over the summer. Last summer, I was scheduled to appear in court all but two Fridays between June 2nd and August 11th. Once adjudication takes place where the trial occurs and the child is found to be a child in need of supervision, we are responsible for then presenting the case before an interdisciplinary team made up of representatives from the local court, from the Department of Social Services, from Northwestern Community Services, and together, we brainstorm services that are available in our community that may be of some assistance to this family. The team is then charged with providing a report to the court with recommendations for disposition. We then, again, return to court for disposition. These take place often during the summer. So in addition to that, there are contacts that need to be made with service providers. There are contacts that need to be made with the attorneys that are involved in these cases, as well as the assistant Commonwealth attorney that's prosecuting. We have seen a significant increase in truancy cases under our new, our current administration as efforts designed to include our efforts to address truancy and accreditation, as well as just the struggles we've seen coming out of the pandemic with getting students back to school. I think that just about wraps it up.
So you're just presenting this, this evening and it's planned to be in action, I know, for somewhere?
Yes, ma'am, just a presentation. So that you understand why we're, we're, the need is there because if Mr. Haynes is working over this, over the summer, you know, we may be, man, you know, we need to make that right. And so we see the need in our division right now to extend, one, to, I know we talked either eleven or twelve months. I don't know which one, which one we landed on yet, but I guess I could look here. It's got twelve months. But we've also talked about maybe the need for an additional attendance officer as well, depending upon how things go. But right now, we wanted to start with this. And then we'll present it for approval at the December meeting. And wanted to give the board just an opportunity to ask any questions or have the discussion right now.
What questions may you have for us that we can help answer?
Next up, we have an instructional update from Ms. Bragg.
Hello again. So tonight, we're going to have a presentation from Doug Goodstefnowski and Hope Petty regarding teacher support. It's going to cover some things related to our professional development and mentoring and things like that for not just new teachers, but all of our teachers. And I'll turn it over to them in just a minute. I also, as part of the instructional update, just wanted to spend a moment in response to an email that I had received from Mrs. Salins about local history in our history, in our history classrooms. Mrs. Salins had asked what incorporation of local history we have in our history classes while at the same time she recognized the standards of learning and while we're trying to get scores up and things like that along the way. But I just wanted to respond to that. So as far as local history goes, in 2019, we did add to Virginia Studies, U.S. History I at sixth grade and Virginia U.S. History at eleventh grade, Dr. Joseph Warren as part of a local history standard in addition to the content that's already there. That is where he kind of fit into his place in history as part of the Revolutionary War and that sort of thing. So those are the three places where we did insert his name a little bit about him. And that also came as part of the dedication of those plaques that you see in each one of our schools about Dr. Warren and kind of where the county gets its name from and that sort of thing. I agree, I would like to see some more local history incorporated into our history classes. I think the best opportunity for that will probably come as we start to look at the new VDOE history standards. Those are set for full implementation in right now, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, that may change, but right now, we think that that's when those will be fully implemented, which means that's the year they'll be tested. Still trying to discern a little bit about what's required from the state as far as the sequencing of courses. They've put forth some suggestions and other times it's said required. So as we're starting to kind of piece together what our sequence of courses will look like, right now, I would say the best opportunity to perhaps put together, you know, a couple of maybe small units for local history would come at fifth grade. There may be an opportunity there if our course sequence remains the same to potentially work with maybe like the Warren Heritage Society or something like that to come up with a couple of, you know, sort of smaller truncated units to slip in there. You know, our history teachers are, do have a full slate of content and the fact-based content of history has increased with the new twenty-five, twenty-six standards. So the number of people that they have to remember, the number of events they have to keep up with, so they are fully loaded. I know that the state says the standards are, you know, the base and add to them, but time is of the essence when it comes to adding to curriculum. But like I say, I think as we look at our twenty-five, twenty-six, you know, what's going to come to us in history, I think that might be the best opportunity to look and see if there's some places where we can, you know, potentially work to add some local history in. So I just wanted to address that.
All right. And with any questions on that?
And then, so for our presentation tonight, from the couple of members of the Instructional Resource Team, and it's Doug, he is also serving as the interim director of technology. And Hope Petty is our teacher support coordinator. And so they'll talk to you a little bit about what all we have going on in the county to support our teachers.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Heather, for introducing us. Like she said, we're both members of our Instructional Resource Team. We work together a lot on professional development and new teacher support, but also, like she had mentioned, teacher support for everyone in the division.
So some of our goals when we're trying to support the teachers are to make sure that we're finding ways to help increase our student achievement, building teacher efficacy so that they can be better at their craft, and trying to find ways to help them feel supported so that we can increase retention, at least from the standpoint of how we provide
So basically, the teacher demographics here in Warren County consist of three hundred ninety-five total teachers, and we have fifty-three teachers in year one. In that year one group, it's a pretty diverse group, it makes up four different types. We have our novice teachers, those are people who came straight out of an education program, either a four-year degree or a master's program for education. They're the ones who are pretty well-prepared because they went to a teacher prep program. We have career switchers, so they're people pretty self-explanatory, they spent their time in a different career and switched over and have gone through both phases, phase one and phase two, through an accredited program for career switchers. We also have student teachers, so those are individuals who only have student teaching labs, so they're completing student teaching in their classroom. And then a teacher in residence is the most unique type of teacher that we have today, that is somebody who has a four-year degree outside of education and they're receiving all of their training on the job. So we're kind of supporting four different types in that first year, and some of those start to trickle over into those years twos and two and three. But typically, by the time that they get to that point, they've all been provisionally licensed. And so in year two and three, we have forty-one teachers. So in total, years one through three, ninety-four that receive support from me exclusively for the first three years. We also, I wanted to mention, we have fourteen parent professionals that are enrolled in our Grow Your Own programs. We have partnerships with Grand Canyon University, Laurel Ridge, and JMU, and upon graduation, they become teachers for us here in Warren County.
So today, we're really just going to kind of hit, these are multiple ways and programs, ways that we support our teachers right now. We're just going to kind of go through how we engage the stakeholders to build out our programs, how we try to build teacher leaders within our county, the induction program that we have for new teachers, mentoring, a variety of professional development that we offer, and then some of our newer wings, but also some of the most important, in my opinion, instructional coaching programs, and also something we call instructional partnerships.
So we're going to kind of break down each of these briefly as we go through. So the first thing that we've really tried to strive towards this year is engaging stakeholders, one reason why we wanted to be here tonight. Another thing that we've done is created a teacher support committee. And through that, we've tried to pool a very diverse group and so that it can also be equitable across the board. We have members that are elementary, middle, and high school teachers, but we've also asked for new teachers, years that have, teachers that have been here for a few years and then also veterans so that we can get their input. We also have new experienced coaches, administrators, as well as division leaders. So it's about fifteen people that met for the first committee meeting last week. And our goals are to meet four times per year, next meeting to talk about professional development, as well as as we move into semester two, what are some ways that we can really continue to retain our teachers. So we focus on induction and mentoring, support for all of those teachers, and PD as well. We're also kind of striving towards, working towards building teacher leaders. We know that teachers prefer to learn from each other, so we're really trying to empower them and give them opportunities to be a leader in our schools. When we provide opportunities for leadership, it has a positive impact on recruitment, job satisfaction, and student achievement. Ways that we've tried to compensate teachers for those additional roles and responsibilities are for our induction coaches, they receive a stipend for that role, five hundred fifty dollars for their first teacher, and then a hundred dollars for each additional teacher they support after that. Thank you to you all. Our mentors are now being compensated. They receive a two hundred fifty dollar contract, stipend in December and then another one in January. So, and for that, and I'll kind of break down what they do to receive that stipend. Other opportunities for teachers to be compensated include team leaders, department chairs, as well as opportunities for curriculum work. We work really hard to get them to be the ones who facilitate and lead the professional development. We have about seventeen different options going on in Warren County right now, most of which are being led by either a teacher or a coach. We also try to establish community of learning experiences and facilitating that culture of coaching, which we'll talk about tonight. So induction and mentoring, as teacher support coordinator, that kind of is my primary responsibility. I wanted to break it down for you, kind of to see what it looks like for teachers when they're in that first couple of years. They come to me a week before they hit all the other teachers and they're with me for four days. This past year, we hosted it at Warren Patty Middle School. Following that, we do four workshops throughout the year, and the primary focus of the first year in Warren County is classroom management. And so we just had our second, part two workshop last week, kind of circling And so we just had our second, part two workshop last week, kind of circling back to the topics that we brought up back in September. We also offer coaching cycles, and I'm not going to steal Doug Shine, he's going to talk a little bit about that, but that's about a four to six-week process, and we use a system called Connect Hub now, and it's kind of a data collection site that we use. We really kind of went all in, starting in August, so we could see how big of an impact we're having on our teachers and then our students. And through that coaching cycle lens, we've had 282 coaching interactions by our coaches throughout the county. Our induction coaches, we have 13 of those, and they meet with our teachers monthly. We did something a little different with them this year, too, and have a CTE induction coach, too, because we noticed a higher turnover in that group, so they receive the induction coach in their school, but also a CTE induction coach to help them with that aspect as well. 57 mentors, and in order to receive the stipend, they complete weekly check-ins, but are only required to fill, to submit monthly logs through Frontline. They come to me, I submit them, and each month, I reach out to them and ensure that they're supporting their teachers. And I've gotten lots of positive feedback from the teachers that they are feeling supported by both their induction coaches and their mentors. And then also, observations are completed by our, by myself. I do two per year, and those typically lead into coaching cycles, coaching experiences, different types of conversations, and all of our year one teachers, with the exception of two, have been completed for the first semester. And there's about, like we said in the previous slide, there's 94 track one through three. And then we offer a year-long professional development. So kind of to break down the professional learning, one thing that we use is the Learning Forward Standards for Professional Learning alongside of the VDOE. And we kind of, we've really kind of went into that a lot this year as Region Four to talk about, how can we change the way we do PL so that people are interested and want to engage? One thing that we learned is that a one-size-fits-all approach for professional learning no longer works. So we try to provide really diverse and equitable experiences, because none of our schools look the same and they all need something different. So we really try, and also our teachers need something different, too, so we really try to hone in on that. We make sure that there's opportunities for teacher choice. Even our year one through three have an option to be able to customize what that experience looks like. We've learned that after school or one-hour workshops isn't always the most effective way anymore, so we try to tuck it as much into the day as we can to provide ongoing and job-embedded experiences so that our teachers can see that it works with their students and their classroom. We align everything that we do to our district and school goals, and we focus on those high-leverage practices that are listed there. We even try to take a different approach in the way the PL is designed and presented to the teachers. A lot of what we do is book studies, we have collaborative work groups, which we refer to as PLCs. There's lots of options for self-paced virtual learning, and then again, coaching cycles. And then professional learning, Learning Forward kind of says that if you focus in and align your practices to these standards for professional learning, we're going to design high-quality experiences for our educators. And when we do that, our educators are going to grow and then start to apply that to their practice. And when they're actually using it in their practices, all of our students are going to show improvements, and that's the ultimate goal.
So one of the areas that we've really been working on last year and a half, last year, we talked to you all about instructional coaching. These are people, these are teachers, that work directly with the teachers to help them develop their practice, classroom management, these kinds of things. We use, we decided that we want to focus a lot more on instructional coaching, because when Hope was talking about the best practices for professional development, this is a way teachers can get a choice with what they want to work on and improve, and then the coach can help them with that goal. It is job embedded, so that person's in there helping them co-plan, co-teach, act as a thought partner, and over a longer period of time, usually, like she said, four to six, six to eight weeks, depending on what they're working on, and then they can kind of revisit that. So throwing in here, some of the, just kind of that research, John Hattie, one of the research guys, he says, anything that's a .4 or higher is going to allow for a student to have like a year's worth of growth. That's, that's, that's a really good, high-quality thing. We want our students to have better achievement. So if we can have a way to help teachers improve and then students improve, coaching can help do that. And then if we can get teachers, we keep talking about teacher collective efficacy, this idea that teachers believe that they can do it, we're all in it together, it's not just my students, it's our students. So if we can build to that kind of like culture, then we're going to have an even better impact on our students overall. So these are some different ways coaches support teachers. Classroom support is the bread and butter of what coaches are doing with the teachers. It can be just working in the classroom at the time when the teacher's trying to implement that ed tech piece. It can be helping them develop resources. It can be about like, let's look at the student's data and then change the instruction because of what we're seeing in the data. It can just be somebody to bounce ideas off of. So these are kind of the everyday things. Feedback's a big part of it. We've been working on some different approaches, the feedback, to make it more about strength-based feedback, not always talking about, these are things that you're not doing well, here's how you can improve. It's more of like, these are the things that you're doing well, how can we build on that? And then give them some ideas to reflect on, and the teacher can then come up with some, some suggestions on how to improve it, and then you can be there to support them. Coaching cycles are one piece of that. It's just another tool in the coach's toolkit, say like, hey, do you want to do a cycle? We can go ahead and set a goal, work on it together over that period of time. And then professional learning experiences, can be any, any of those like, those kind of things, like when I was working, I was like a technology coach, might just be like, we're going to look at this tool, and then you can turn it into, let's see some ways that you can design some high-quality instruction where this tool can help the students achieve in a better way. So just a quick idea, coaching cycles, really, we're looking at here, like the teacher sets the goal with the coach, then they say, okay, well, here's how we're going to work together. It's an agreement. So it's not just one person dictating how it's going to go. They sit down, schedule out over that six-week period, here's when we're going to meet to co-plan, here's when I'm going to come into the classroom and help you co-teach or to do that strategy, and then, then have some time to reflect and debrief and bounce off ideas off each other. At the end of that coaching cycle, then you can kind of say like, did we meet the goal? No, let's go back and kind of like, maybe tweak that goal a little bit. Do we meet the goal? Sure. Do we want to go ahead and take a break? Do I need to go ahead as a coach and work with some other teachers? Or maybe we just need to go back and make some adjustments to our plan. The other piece that we just started this year is something we call instructional partnerships, and this was really kind of something that was already using. We use a lot of student-centered coaching, that's like our model that we have when we're working with all of our coaches. So we've got Title I instructional coaches that are assigned to your Title I schools. We've got technology integration coaches, which we have across the buildings, and some of them hop around between buildings. And then we've got division-level people, the Instruction Resource Team, we also do some coaching, that's a piece of what we do. So we have a pretty wide net we're trying to build out here. But the instructional partners are really a way that we said, well, here's a way that principals can partner up with teachers, or instructional coaches can also be part of that, as a way to not just do evaluative feedback and observations, it's more of a regular, like over, over this period of time, I can go in, I can observe, and then I can give some strength-based feedback with some questions to reflect on, and then it can start that conversation. So we're really looking at ways that we can have that sort of like ongoing observation, a way to build relationships with the teachers, focus on their strengths, keep it student-centered. A lot of times when we're giving feedback for these partnerships, we'll say, I noticed that the students were, were working on this, and they really seemed engaged in that lesson. But I have some, some questions, I'm curious about what was going on here, I didn't quite catch what was happening. And it's not to be evaluative, it's just like, you're curious about something, and they say like, well, how would this lesson look if you were to pose your questions in this way? Like, how might that open up some conversation with students? How might it look if, instead of having your students raise their hands, you were to have them partner up and talk to each other about something, and then share it out with the class? So these kind of partnerships really allow for ways for us to go ahead and have those conversations around, around the things that we need to, on instruction, ways that people can get in there and co-plan with the teachers. And these sometimes will spin out into coaching cycles. Right now, AS Rhodes is, is using instructional partners, and they have a pretty unique model, they have peer, peer models going on. So each one of their teachers is paired up with another teacher to do these kind of like partnerships, and then they switch it up throughout the year. E. Wilson's just started recently, so their, their admin team, their coaching team, all are paired up with some teachers to do these kind of strength-based feedback. And the schools that we have down here are, are either looking into it, considering it, trying to figure out how they, how they would like to try to incorporate it going forward. Some of them are using it a little bit, like testing it out. So I don't know if I did justice to it, but we, we, we saw another school that was using it down in North Carolina, South Carolina? Can't remember. South Carolina. And the gentleman, his name's Dr. Carlos Grant, and he was like, you know, we shouldn't shit on people. We got to get out there, instead of saying, I really think you should do it this way. It's more about looking at how they're doing it and giving them a new way to like reflect on it. So we talked about all of these ways, these pathways that we have for supporting teachers. As we move forward, we really have continued discussions on what these look like now, ways that we need to go ahead and sort of tweak things as we go along, because maybe the pathways will change a little bit, maybe some of them will expand upon others, maybe, you know, you throw away some of the bad ideas based on feedback we get. When Hope was talking about engaging stakeholders, it's not just about the committees, we do send out surveys to teachers on what kind of professional development do you want? What do you need? Principals, we send out surveys to them as well. So we're always kind of looking for feedback on that. And then we're always asking, who would like to facilitate PD? So what's something that you're strong at and you can share with somebody else that's in the division? We appreciate your time. If you have any questions, we're all about it.
Any questions for us, Beth? Could you walk us?
I have one. How do you, the feedback you get from teachers? So let's, let's look at the teachers that need the most help are the first-year teachers. And that's part of our goal, is to get these teachers to stay, okay? So the feedback that you get on the, just say, the classroom management for a new teacher, a first-year teacher, that's their biggest obstacle. They know the material to teach, but they don't have the classroom management. We've seen this at one of the middle schools. So how are we measuring, or how are we coming up with information on how this program is working? I think we need to know, and then if we have to change it a little bit, you can change it, you all know what, what you have to change. So how are we measuring the feedback from the first-year teacher?
That's a really good question. One of the big pieces that we use now is Connect Hub. And so we are able to, like, and we're able to attach all of the coaching experiences to high-leverage practices. So let's say it's a first-year teacher, and it's classroom management, we're able to measure how they enter that coaching experience and how they leave that coaching experience. And in between, we're able to kind of attach different interactions to it to see, are they on the mark? Do they need new, they need additional support? And that data kind of collects it for us, and then we're able to use that to make decisions with, alongside the teacher. I don't want to say for the teacher, it's more so alongside the teacher, and we'll have those conversations. We're also able to, if it's a first-year teacher and we know it's classroom management, we're able to use the strength-based feedback, like he referred to, to kind of have them come around to it being their idea, that classroom management is the thing that we need to look at, and we can put different types of pre-input, like base, we can collect baseline data with them, and then the way we structure the conversations and stuff like that, they're more bought in and willing to make that growth. So we use a couple of different ways to measure the impact, and then like he said, some of it is that subjective data, so we're collecting surveys, is it working? We're reaching out to the induction coaches and collecting survey data from them, reaching out to mentors and collecting data from them, as well as the administrators, and making changes in the moment. Like if it's not working, we really strive towards making those changes right away. And so some schools in particular that may have more classroom management concerns, our instructional coaches are working with, every single one of those new teachers are assigned to an instructional coach, and they're collecting data for them through our Connect Hub system. So, does that answer your question?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in a little bit, too, but I think, one is, when we do look at the data, we can see what, what is the coaching's focus. And I will say, a lot of it in that first quarter, which is not surprising, is classroom management. So we can see breakdowns, a vast majority of the coaching interactions that are happening are classroom management, there's some high-leverage practices, or some ways to engage a student, but I see a lot of it just through the instructional practice, how to manage your classroom. Routines and procedures are a big one. When people are looking at, even in the ed tech, they're looking at, how do I manage my students using those Chromebooks? So we're looking at our, our program, our Go Guardian, the one where teachers can go ahead and say, these are the only windows or tabs that the student can be working on in a certain timeframe, teachers are trying to learn how to use that, or just the routines and procedures of saying like, now's not Chromebook time, we're going to shut our Chromebooks, put them aside. Teaching teachers how to be a little bit more, I will say, stronger in their enforcement of some of those kind of things. The other pieces, and Hope pulled up some data today on her track one meetings that she had, maybe she's being modest, but a lot of the teachers in there say, I feel very supported, I've sought out coaching cycles. So a lot of times our coaching, when we're talking about that, it's, it's all teachers, teachers opt into it. I mean, we do have the component in the year one teachers, we say you have to do a coaching cycle, because we want them to be familiar with like what a coaching cycle looks like and feels like. But for the most part, they can volunteer, any teachers can volunteer, it doesn't matter whether they're experienced or not, and they get to choose what that goal is. This is not, this is not usually something that administrators, putting someone on a plan of improvement, saying you must have coaching. I think even in those cases, it's perfectly fine, and we say administrators can say, the coach is a resource if the teacher is really struggling on a plan. I don't, I don't want to turn this into a negative side right now. I think that really is, the teachers do feel supported in it, and if they express that they want support in another way, we're always, we're always working to make sure that we, we find a way to help that happen. So if we have our coaches in one place, even though they're assigned to a certain building, if that person was like a family and consumer science teacher, and they're now at an elementary school, as a tech coach, we'll say, hey, we have a brand-new family and consumer science teacher, would you mind doing a coaching cycle with that person, their, their person's support? So we will shuffle our coaches around if we can. Title I coaches have certain, we can't really pull them out of the buildings because of the way Title I works, but our tech coaches, we can, we can utilize in different ways to shuffle them around a little bit to support people. Division coaches, we can shuffle ourselves around and hit up whatever schools we need. So we talked a lot about that.
And that Connect Hub system is super helpful, we have all of our coaches, anytime they're working with a teacher that's in years one through three, we have them tag track to that so that we can see how often and how frequently are our new people being supported, and then able to dig into that data and figure out what are the trends, and so that I can then use that for professional development decisions, for our workshops, or for our monthly meetings and things like that.
Can you walk us through, if a teacher wants help with something, like how do they ask for it? What is the timing? Is there a waitlist? Is it right away? Like, can you just walk us through kind of the logistics of that?
Sure. So it depends on how many instructional coaches or technology coaches that are in a school, and how many teachers that they can support at one time and give them a really valuable experience. So let's say a max could be four to six teachers at once that an instructional coach could support with additional responsibilities.
I'm sorry, let's clarify, for a coaching cycle?
For a coaching cycle.
If they're just... If they're just looking for some one-on-one, like time, the coaches can often go in and support pretty much immediately, like within that day, within that week, they can set up some time. If it's something that's more of like a formal coaching cycle or over a longer period of time, it might take a little while because of the capacity of, you're gonna be working with this particular teacher during this time slot. That kind of blocks out that time slot for a period of time, so.
Because they're in the classrooms with the teachers, working alongside them. So it's like that job-embedded professional development that they're offering right then. And they're in the classroom a few times a week alongside the teacher, supporting them with, let's say, that classroom management. And then the other job responsibilities could be that professional development that's tucked into the day or whatever it is, that they have found trends through using that Connect Hub data. But if I'm a teacher who is looking for coaching support or I'm asking for help, typically the steps would be, if they have that, that coach has a presence in the school and has that positive relationship, they're gonna go straight to that coach and say, hey, I really need to focus on classroom management. My kids are struggling with X, Y, and Z. How can you help me? And so then the teacher will, the coach will then come in and kind of sit down and talk through the process of, this is what the paper looks like, this paperwork looks like that's heavy on the coach, not on the teacher, because we know how busy they are. And this is what you can expect from me throughout the entire experience. That it's gonna be one-on-one, exclusive experience that you can start or stop or anytime. If it doesn't feel good to you and you want to pause it, you can do that. If you master a goal quickly, we can change that goal. A lot of the Trek One through Three coaching experiences have actually happened from those observations that I've been doing throughout the year. And it's, like he mentioned, through the instructional partnerships, we've been doing, we've changed the way we give feedback. So it doesn't feel like we're trying to fix the teachers, we're trying to help them grow. So I'll go into a classroom and structure that strength-based feedback like the way he discussed, and we'll send it to the teacher. And typically, that teacher will come back and say, I never thought about it that way. Could you help me explore it? And I'll say, sure. Would you feel comfortable if I put you in touch with an instructional or a technology coach in your school? And then they're, sure. And then next thing you know, they're in a coaching experience with people in their buildings. So there's a lot of different ways that it can happen. But I have noticed, ever since we've changed the way that we give feedback for our teachers, they're either turning into like a conversation or a professional development or a full coaching cycle for that individual. And so it's really helped kind of leverage that practice.
With the instructional partnerships that you had listed, that AS Rhodes and E. Wilson are already doing, and that Hilda, Skyline Middle School and Skyline High School are considering it, how do we encourage them to move from considering it to doing it?
Well.
Is there hesitation we should know about or is there a question?
No. So this was something that we had introduced right before the school year had started. So when I was having conversations with the principals about it, I'm a firm believer of, it's better to make sure that you have a comfortable plan, that it can be implemented well. So if you need to take this whole year to kind of think things through about, who do you wanna, how do you want these partnerships to look? Because like I said, each school kind of has a unique plan on how, or idea how they want to implement it. Who do you want to be your instructional leaders? Who would you want to partner up with? Is it gonna be that you're gonna go ahead and try to be a partner? Like, if there's, I don't know, let's just say five administrators and a coach, you've got potential six instructional leaders. If you were to divide up your whole school, principals can't take on the same load of people at the same time. Are you gonna have this be volunteer? Like, do the teachers volunteer to be a partner with you? Do you want to break it up and do an NFL-style draft of who gets who? Or are you gonna do this for the whole year with the same group as a partner? Or are you gonna say, like, I'm gonna work with these people as partnerships for, like, the first quarter and then we're gonna change it up? So these are, I just throw questions at them and say, you really want to think about it and how is this gonna best work? Because I mean, the thing for this is, you're trying to build relationships, get to know the teacher, come in, say, I'm not here to observe for an evaluation purpose. I just want to go ahead and see what's going on, throw some ideas out, you know, that, see what's going on, give you some strength-based feedback, find some value in what you're doing. And then, like she said, it really does open up those things. So as far as moving them towards that, I think it's just having those conversations to circle back and say, we talked about this. Where are you at with that? And having some chances to share, for the schools that are having success with it, we want to open up those conversations with them and say, like, what kind of value do you see in this and where is it going? And how can this potentially be used in other schools a little bit more?
So when we came to you all last year with instructional coaching, we were about at the same place as we are with instructional partnerships, very close to the beginning. When we started our instructional coaching, we had 12 people trained in the school division on coaching and we were able to build that up to 19. And that was through like conversations with you all, professional development with the schools. It started with the people that you have, like he suggested, like work with the people that you have and let's do professional development in that way. Instructional partnerships is kind of there right now. We're in the schools, first we're going into the schools that are expressing interest providing professional development to them, talking about who can be on that team, and then we provide them a guidance document, because, you know, they might not feel super comfortable talking about what it's really gonna look like with us sitting in the room. So we say, here's your set of questions to work through. We step away and then they're able to kind of mull it over for a little bit and see, is this something that can be sustainable right now? Or do we, as you had mentioned, kind of wait till this next semester and on? So we're still kind of just in that, in that process of exploring it.
I'm gonna go back to the first-year teacher, because that's the one that, that group is the one that I'm most concerned about. And, you know, a first-year teacher, you can fit them into different categories. Number one, they're all excited about it. I mean, let's face it, they wouldn't have applied. Some of them are scared and overwhelmed. So if you've got a school, and I think Skyline Middle School has a lot of first-year teachers there, is that correct, Dr. Ballinger?
We would have more. And Hope would be able to answer that question better than.
Say again?
Hope would be able to answer that question better than I.
We have 26 teachers in their first three years, about 15 first-years.
Okay, that's Skyline.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I think the total on the slide earlier was around 40 or so that were fit into that category.
Yeah. I thought I could find it quickly and it just like ran away.
At the beginning.
Yeah, 94 total, 41. Where'd it go? When you can't, when you want something, you can't find it. It was, I'm not ready to go. Yeah. And I know those numbers off the top of my head and somehow I froze and can't remember them now. But yes.
Okay. So if we have a building that is, has more novice teachers, first-year folks, and they're having trouble with the classroom management, and there's other problems at that school, that to me is a hotspot that we need to look at and get that tightened up so that these first-year teachers don't leave. We want them to stay. We're gonna grow our own program. We're doing everything we can to attract and keep these teachers. So I think, and I'm glad you guys are, what I've heard tonight is great. Don't get me wrong. But I think we need to, for next year or hopefully for second semester, start looking at the buildings that are really, a lot of new teachers and a lot of regular middle-school problems, okay? And try to help tighten that up a little bit, some support for the administration and the teachers at these buildings.
So Skyline Middle School, like in particular, when it comes to coaching, we were able to get two instructional coaches this school year to support that building. They're brand-new coaches that have caught on really fast and they're both supporting about eight teachers apiece, all first-year, all mostly focused on classroom management. And anybody who's outside of those numbers are probably your year-two and your year-three. And some of that positive data that's coming from the Trek One meeting that I had last week, which is those year-one people, came from the teachers at Skyline Middle School that are working exclusively with our instructional coaches or our technology coach over there. They're getting glowing reviews from everyone involved. I think that's, in our coaching data, you'd see that that's a highlight. That's, they're really have a lot of coaching interactions over in that building and they're supporting a lot as brand-new coaches. In regards to induction support, we used to only have one induction coach at Skyline Middle School, but because the numbers were so high, we have two induction coaches over there now. So they've taken that number and split it in half so that they can both kind of really support and make those numbers a little bit lower.
Well, congratulations on that because that is a real concern of mine, first-year teachers. At a building that's having some issues anyway is a good way to lose some of those first-year teachers. So keep that good work going on over there.
That's all our instructional coaches and technology coaches over there. They deserve all the credit. They have worked incredibly hard to support those people. And like I said, they're in their classrooms every day, multiple times a day, multiple times a week, alongside them, supporting.
Well, that's great. I appreciate that very much.
Absolutely. I'll just take the opportunity to say that I think that it was because of that schedule change that Skyline Middle School did to the seven-period day, that it opened up those two slots to change those positions to instructional coach positions. And so whether it's a focus on coaching cycles or instructional partnerships, you know, it is about a prioritization, both in the school and at the division level, to have the people to support, to support that. You know, we want to do job-embedded PD. That's what we hear. Teachers will respond best to, it's the best practice that's set forth. You know, while our workforce has changed, so has the way we try to deliver professional development and support our teachers. And I do want to thank Hope and Doug, who over the last year and a half have done an amazing job building what a, a true professional development and teacher support program. But again, you know, you see the number of teachers in years one through three. You know, Hope is a one-man show as the division's teacher support coordinator, working to do all those observations for those first-year teachers two times a year. And she's doing an amazing job. But, you know, to do that kind of job-embedded, on-the-job training, getting in there right when, you know, we can provide that immediate assistance, does require, you know, the support to the staffing to allow that.
Well, I think that it's gotta come from various groups from within the educational system for that building to become successful. And from what I understand, we're doing that, I just, I'm just really worried about the first-year teacher. That's my biggest concern.
Absolutely. I agree. And we try to put as much energy and time that we can into them so that they can feel supported. And like I said, our coach is working alongside them every day.
Well, I appreciate your efforts and I'm sure that it's gonna be successful.
I hope so.
Would it be easier if, like, I'm looking at the numbers here with the, so that, at least as far as the beginning of October, there were 48 teachers total at Skyline Middle, correct? 22 at that point were on a provisional license. So of 48 teachers, if we have 26 that are within their first three years, then that only leaves 22 teachers there that have more, that four or more years' experience. So we have more new teachers than experienced. Is that, it feels like a heavy load of newbies at one school. And so looking at the data you've given of the first-year teachers, there are 53 division-wide first-year teachers, 15 of those are at Skyline Middle School. So that means 28% of our first-year teachers are at one school. How, and it concerns me, is that they're just considering the instructional partnerships. I feel like we really need to strongly encourage them to jump in.
Yeah. So I believe, so Skyline Middle School, their administrative team, I believe, is doing the instructional partnerships. It just doesn't include instructional coaches currently because instructional coaches are doing so much of the, like, coaching cycles and coaching in the classrooms throughout the day. But that's certainly something that we can reach out to and provide more PL or whatever it is to get a larger group going.
Let us know what is that they need?
It's almost like, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
It's almost like we need all hands on deck for that building. And I know that people from the school board office have been going over there, trying to give a hand and things like that. You know, my thanks to everybody that's jumping in, but we really need to turn that building around. And it looks like we're getting there, you know? We're getting there. So that's a good thing.
And also, the coaches that are on the division level that are trained are also coaching over there to provide support to the instructional coaches because, as you mentioned, it is a heavy load of new teachers. And so we want to be able to make sure that they get the support they need, but also the individuals that are four-plus years have the support that they need as well.
That's gonna be the end of our work session portion. Can I get someone to lead us to closed session, please?
This motion is made that this opening House meeting of the Warren County School Board become a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. The School Board desires to discuss the following matter in a closed meeting. Section 2.2-3711A1, Discussion, Consideration, or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment, Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salaries, Disciplining, or Resignation of Employees of the School Board, specifically to review the Personnel Report, the Personnel Report Addendum, and two employee personnel issues. And two, Section 2.2-3711A2, Discussion or Consideration of Admission or Disciplinary Matters, or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the Scholastic Record concerning any student in Warren County Public Schools, specifically as to discipline matter. Is there a second?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll second that.
Mr. Stokowski, could you do roll call, please?
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.